Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order.
What's it?
Today is Monday, November fif-- no, what? Try it again. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, November 5th, 2018. At 7:30, we're here for the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. I ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Spencer.
Yes, sir.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Hark.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Jackson Brown.
Here.
Leder.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. And I think we have some Christmas music. Is that what we got?
Alleluia.
Okay, well, we're gonna... Molder through with our Christmas music. Agenda item three. Proceed of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who has any written communications they wish to submit to the clerk? If you have any written communications, please raise your hand. No written communications. We'll move on to agenda item four, public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council, and specifically, we ask you to address your remarks to the chair. On any item you so choose, when your name is called, we ask that you approach the microphone over here on my right, your left. Please state your name as we are recording this for the record. Your address is optional. We ask out of respect for the work that we have to get done here this evening, and out of respect for others who may want to speak, that you keep your comments to three minutes. I will be keeping time. If you go over three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up your comments. Clerk Spencer, is there anybody at this time who has signed up for public comment?
Yes, Mayor. Quad Pagash, 566 West Gladys.
We had a resident come to this council last meeting. He read an ordinance. Unfortunately, he didn't read the amendments to the ordinance. At the whim of the council members, they can either accept or reject the ordinance. Exactly what they did. And look at what's happening tonight. Little after the horse is out of the barn, now we're gonna change that ordinance for a specific group. Doesn't say much for a legislative body, now does it? That resident believed that what was written meant something. Well, it didn't mean anything. Council proved that. It's gonna prove it again tonight. It's gonna vote on this. It's gonna throw in an exception. A little after the fact, but it's going to do it. Government at its best, right? All I got something else. I'd like to thank Finance for that extra $10 million in general obligation bonds. They voted that in last week, or the council did. You know, prior to 2014, this council did something. Voted in a little extra payment on your water bill. Took effect in 2014. Add a little extra. It was $8.48. This is 2018. It's about $30.62. Less than four years. It's all for a good cause. Surely is. And I have no doubt in my mind it'll go up in 2019. You're all aware of it, right? Sure you are. You're gonna vote for it. If somebody's gonna tell you it's needed, are they also gonna tell you that this council votes in an extra little fee on the water bill that it charges the people?
Mr. Pagash, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
I will, Mayor. I'm paying for it. What you do is, you add to the cost of what you paid to the county, and last year, you added .94 of that. So much. So keep it in mind. You're using it, people don't pay attention to it, and you're gonna jack it up again. But this year was only $180. What will it be next year?
Good evening, Kathleen Sullivan. Tonight, I saw a couple items on the agenda related to stormwater. The first one was the item for the intergovernmental agreement with the school board, and I know that you've spent a lot of time negotiating with the school board, in fact, including public sessions here. And I know this has been a long time coming, so I'm in support of that. Additionally, you have a stormwater fee in Lua for the project called 195 that used to be called Wilder Crossing, and wanted to just... I remember that Wilder Crossing received a grant from the city and was wondering if the grant transferred over to this 195 project because they thought the ownership name didn't change of the LLC. And just wanna make sure if that is... The project is still getting that money because it seems as though that money would then be used to pay the stormwater fee in Lua, and just seems kinda weird. Thanks.
That's all who's signed in, Mayor.
Okay, that's it for public forum for those who signed in. Is there anybody in the audience at this time who did not have an opportunity to sign in on our sign-in sheet that was at the back of the meeting but wishes to address the council at this time? If so, please raise your hand so I can get a count. Anybody who did not have an opportunity wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, we will move on. Agenda item five, any announcements from the dais? Clerk Spencer.
Yes, thank you. Tomorrow is Election Day, November 6th. We're voting in federal, state, and county people, and the polls open at 6:00 and close at 7:00. And if you don't know your polling place, the county will be happy to answer that question at 630-407-5600. Thank you.
Wonderful. Any other announcements from the dais? Alderman Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one's a little bit out, but we don't have another council meeting until after it. But on Friday, November 16th, the Spring Road Business Association is once again hosting the tree lighting that's at the Prairie Path and Spring Road, and there's gonna be cocoa and cookies and festive carols from 6:00 to 6:30, and Santa's supposed to arrive, anticipated, at 6:30 via a fire engine, so that'll be exciting. And then the tree lighting will be to follow. So I thank the Spring Road Business Association for bringing the neighborhood together, and if you wanna find out anything, if you get the time, it's just there, their website is springroad.com. Thank you.
Anything else? Alderman Levin.
Thank you, Mayor. On Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 7th, at 7:30, Alderman Park and I will be hosting the Fifth Ward Town Hall Top Rated Meeting of all Town Hall meetings, and we invite all Fifth Ward residents and anyone else who wants to go to a top-rated meeting to attend.
Fantastic. Any other announcements from the dais? Alderman Park.
It's at Knights of Columbus.
What did I say? You didn't say anything.
You just said the time.
7:30 Knights of Columbus.
If they really wanna come.
It's a secured location.
Knights of Columbus on South York Road.
Okay. Anyone else? Onto consent agenda, agenda item six. At this time, is there any item any alderman wishes to see pulled from the consent agenda to vote no or provide further comment? Alderman Mulliner.
611.
Alderman Bram?
6.4 and 6.14.
6.14? Okay, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 6.4, 6.11, and 6.14. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Toledo. Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Leder.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved minus item 6.4, .11, and .14. Onto agenda item 6.4. This is a report out of Public Works. Clerk Spencer, I ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Buildings Committee that the city approved the stormwater detention fee in lieu request for the 195 Elmhurst Project at 195 North Addison, that the developer be required to pay $26,600 fee at the time of the building permit issuance, and that the city attorney be authorized to prepare the appropriate documentation for council approval. Signed by Jim Kennedy, Chairman Marty Deuter, Vice Chairman Norman Leder, unsigned by Michael J. Bram.
Okay, to put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the report, and recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will defer to Alderman Bram who pulled the report.
Alderman Bram, you pulled this report. Care to provide comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report is in regards to, and one of the residents already spoke about it, storm water-related. And what I mean by that, this is a project that is being proposed that the petitioner is requesting to not do onsite stormwater, but do what we have as an option, stormwater fee in lieu of. If this moves forward, that fee in lieu of would be equivalent to $26,600 for this site compared to doing stormwater onsite. During our discussion in committee, we talked about what that approximate, and we don't have, and neither did the developer, have an accurate estimate of the cost of stormwater onsite. But the approximation that was thrown out there, I believe it was by city staff and a head nod by the petitioners, I don't remember if it was the architect or not, was stating around about $150,000 for stormwater onsite. One of the petitioner's concerns was not only the dollar amount, but also that because they are permitted and would like to move forward with pretty much building lot line to lot line, that the stormwater onsite would have to be underneath this development. And there's obvious concerns from them and any petitional residents that would want to move there. My concern is, there's four criteria that we're supposed to be evaluating this petitioner's request on, and it's listed in the report. I do not agree with the assessment of the first two. That states, number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the stormwater storage provisions of this chapter, essentially mandating that they do stormwater onsite. It's always tough, and over my tenure, you know, discussion of what is a reasonable return is definitely a difficult term to define. But in our discussions, as I already stated, they're talking about $150,000 approximately, plus or minus, on an $11 million development project. So we're talking less than 2%. Actually, if you round up, about 1.4% of that project would be the cost of doing stormwater onsite. So just with that very low percentage, and it wasn't discussed in depth, I don't know what their... The petitioner's view of a reasonable return is. We didn't talk about it in committee. I don't have any idea on what they forecast to be a return or a profit. But just overall, looking at the numbers, under $200,000 approximately of an $11 million project, so about 1.4, let's say even be gracious and go all the way up to 2%, is very small, in my opinion. Number two, failure to permit paying the stormwater fee in lieu of detention would constitute a hardship to the owner, which has not resulted from actions of the owner. I don't agree with that assessment either, or this recommendation in the report. This petitioner made a request years ago, I wanna say it was three years ago. For whatever reason, the conditions of the marketplace or whatever, what have you, that request did not go through. So it laid dormant for all these years. So to claim that it is not... The hardship was not brought upon the owner, I think, is false. It was due to their decision on not moving forward with the project. It was due to their decision to have knocked down the building. It was due to their decision of not actually petitioning and moving forward with the development before we implemented the ordinance we have today to require stormwater onsite. So the other two criteria I definitely agree with that have been met, but for those two reasons, and I believe significant reasons, I don't believe one and two apply here, and therefore, I cannot... I have not signed the report, and I cannot support this recommendation.
Any other comments? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the requirement that is talked about in this report that applies to this development, is because of the policy that we passed earlier this year, in about January of this year. And it was a policy that took a long time to get it to the... To become our stated policy. I think we had at least nine committee meetings, and there was a lot of discussion. Staff multiple times brought forward examples. We tried to evaluate very carefully what type of burden this requirement would place on proposed development. So staff brought forward a number of examples. We looked at Mariano's as an example. We looked at the residential development down on York, right by the Prairie Path, the townhomes that were built there, as an example. And our conclusion was, you know, if this applied to those projects, that the burden of this new policy would be reasonable and something that could be incorporated into those developments without hindering them in any way. You know, we knew at the time that we created the policy that downtown would be the area that would be very hard to comply with this policy in a kind of cost-effective way. We've got development that goes sometimes by our requirement, lot line to lot line, and right up to the sidewalk. And, you know, we knew that to find a place for stormwater storage in that type of... On that type of parcel would be really hard and probably really expensive. We also, you know, had the discussion that there are very few parcels in our downtown area where this even could apply because the... Almost all our development downtown right now is 100% impervious, so you can't increase it to make it more impervious. So, you know, we really kind of created this with the idea, most places, we'd be able to get stormwater storage in a way that was cost-effective and at a reasonable cost. I think, you know, one example of downtown storage that staff gave us was for... Forget the amount of storage that we put in our downtown Addison deck. It might have been around the $150,000 mark, and we were able to do that very cost-effectively and, you know, kind of in one spot. In this case, you know, there were multiple documents submitted by the petitioner, by the developer. I think one earlier letter said the cost would be about $190,000 just for the construction cost. There was a more recent letter that said it would be about $500,000. So I don't know what the cost would be, but I believe when this came up in committee, if we had had the conversation that said, okay, we can be more stringent than the county, but we're gonna be adding costs between a couple hundred thousand dollars onto a project or half a million onto a project, I think at the committee level, we might have concluded that's too much. So I think downtown in this case, if they were to comply with this requirement, they would be both underground, which we know makes it more expensive, and within the footprint of the building. We also have some stormwater storage at the Han Street Project, but that is underneath the public plaza. No one's living above it. So I think there are cases where we can squeeze in some stormwater downtown, but I think the cost to do this underground and within the footprint of the building make it prohibitive. It came up in public comment earlier, you know, is this project also receiving TIF assistance? The earlier iteration of this project was approved by council for TIF assistance. We were told at our meeting by the developer, and also by... I confirmed with city staff today that there is no plan, there have not been requests for TIF assistance for this project. So just to clarify that point, those are the points I wanted to include. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I ask Clerk Spencer to call the vote.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Leder.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Thirteen ayes, one nays.
Thirteen ayes, one nay, motion carries. Agenda item 6.4 is approved. Onto agenda item 6.11. Clerk, it's a report out of DP&amp;Z. I'd ask Clerk Spencer to read the recommendation.
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommend that the city council approve the applicant's request for a conditional use permit. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for the city council approval. Signed by Michael Hanquist, Chairman, Noel Toledo, Vice Chairman, unsigned, Mark A. Mulliner.
Okay, to put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the report, and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Hanquist, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will defer to my colleague that pulled the report.
Okay. Alderman Mulliner.
I just pulled it, it's about no.
Okay. Any other comments? Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Oh.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Leder.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one nays.
Thirteen ayes, one nay, motion carries. Agenda item 6.11 is approved. Onto agenda item 6.14. This is a zoning ordinance. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending ordinance number ZO-05-2018 to authorize the extension of time for the conditional use permit for the Elmhurst Extended Care Facility, commonly known as 200 East Lake Street and 193 through 197 East Fremont, Illinois, Elmhurst, Illinois. And that's Elmhurst Extended Care, in parentheses.
Okay, to put this ordinance before council, I ask for a motion to approve. Ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Hanquist?
I will also defer this to the alderman that pulled it.
Hey, Alderman Bram, I believe you pulled this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not much more to say compared to two weeks ago when I spoke about the report. I believe the discussion was had, and the city attorney provided an opinion, I'll call it that, in regards to, you know, passing the... What's in our ordinance, 22.26, in regards to the revocation and establishing that there has... There's... Where conditional use has not been established substantially underway within six months from the date of granting thereof, then, without further action by the city council, et cetera. I think we established last time we discussed it, that there hasn't been substantial progress. Also, in regards to that, the letter itself came in after the six-month time period. That states in our own ordinance, and the opinion that I was referencing was that we as a city council have, I guess, not followed or not enforced that in the past, that it has occurred in the past. To me, that's not rationale. I did not know, and shame on me, that we did not enforce that in the past, or that we've missed that in the past, whatever the reason is. That doesn't mean that this one should qualify. We need to right the ship, and since I'm aware that this was with... With any doubt, at least in my mind, outside the six-month time period, that those two criteria are not met in our own ordinance, and therefore, this should not move forward.
Okay. Any other comments? Clerk Spencer?
Toledo.
Aye.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Leder.
Aye.
Palmsky.
No.
And Bram.
No.
Twelve ayes, two nays.
Twelve ayes, two nays, motion carries. Agenda item 6.14 is approved. Onto committee report, 7.1. A report actually issued by myself and city manager Grabowski.
You wanna read that, Mayor, or you want me to?
I'm gonna ask Clerk Spencer to read any part of the report she thinks is relevant.
Just the title, sir, at this point.
Go right ahead.
Okay. Okay, 7.1 is a report from the mayor and the city manager. It's a comprehensive intergovernmental agreement between community unit School District 205 and the city of Elmhurst.
Fantastic. To put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the report, and statement as read by Clerk Spencer. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. This is a little bit unusual, but certainly falls within the bounds of the authority of what we can do underneath... Under our code. So I'm gonna address this, try to be as factual as possible, and I will answer any questions. As council is aware, we signed a letter of understanding... Is that what we call it? Memorandum of understanding, a couple of months ago. Council is also aware of the stormwater needs of the community of the city of Elmhurst, and has been aware for quite some time. We have been in discussions with the school district since almost the day I was elected. Most recently, we have ramped up those talks. I have had countless meetings and conversations with representatives of the school board, and I'm happy to say, my last meeting was with President Cufario and her legal representation. And as a result, the report in front of you. Long story short, basically, assuming this gets approved by both bodies, schools and city agree to a couple of things. city agree to a couple of things. Alderman York, you okay?
I'm, yeah, changing, just changing.
It's not easy.
It's not easy.
Basically, what the report outlines and the draft IGA attached details is, it's the city's intent to build stormwater detention, badly needed stormwater detention, both at Jackson School and at York High School. Basically, our intent is to build dual-use projects at both locations that will store water temporarily in the event of a storm, and be back in functional, in its dual purpose of functionality, at both places shortly after the storm event is over. In addition, there has been a lot of talk between the schools and the city with regard to our TIF number one, which was our original downtown TIF, and an agreement, rather detailed agreement, we entered into in 2004, and subsequently amended a couple of times after that. And there has also been discussions about our current downtown TIF that we have put in place. And basically, this agreement ultimately, when signed, will put to bed any conflicts or difference of opinions that we have, and really allow us to start anew, if you will, with our friends over at the school board, and work together on behalf of the residents of Elmhurst. So I encourage all to support this report. As I said, there's the 60-page intergovernmental agreement that is pretty close to finalized. I know the attorneys are putting some final tweaks on it. It would be in my intent to have a final IGA in front of council two weeks from now for final approval and for my signature. That's my summation of the report and how we got here. Any comments or questions at this time? Seeing none, I will ask Clerk Spencer to call the vote.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leder.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Report is approved. I forgot to mention in my report, well, you know what, we'll just go on to 8.1, which is the mayor's report. That's me. So I'll add it to that. Let me just put it right there. Okay. A couple of things tonight. First of all, I'm very, very happy to say that the city of Elmhurst has retained its AAA rating, it's our AAA bond rating, very happy to announce that. That has a real impact on the finances and the residents of Elmhurst. Second, I'll reiterate what Clerk Spencer had said, which is, vote tomorrow. Please get out there and vote. Third, the Elmhurst History Museum is holding a chamber after-hours event on the 15th of this month, from 5:00 to 7:00, at the museum. It's also the kickoff of our new exhibit, Hometown Holiday, It's a Wonderful Life in Elmhurst. And I know we have some Wonderful Life paraphernalia and information from the original film there, so I encourage all of you to attend. Number four, as you will see tonight, and for the next maybe three or four successive Mondays, we will be holding a committee of the whole meeting immediately following this meeting. It is budget season, when we go over our budget, which is our plan, our fiscal plan for the next year. And finally, I didn't include it in my report under committee reports number 7.1. I want to extend my gratitude and thanks to President Cufario in working with the city, and I'm looking forward to working with her in the future. Anyone else, I'm sorry, City Manager Grabowski.
Thank you. A couple announcements. Over the weekend, we conducted in partnership the pumpkin collection for Halloween. We had a record number of cars come through. We don't have a total on the weight yet, but it was a good turnout again for people to dispose of their pumpkins so that they can be composted and used in a better fashion than thrown in a landfill. Excuse me. Moving on to the York Street resurfacing project, they were set to grind this evening and tomorrow evening, but because of the weather, that's been delayed. But this week overnight, they will be grinding the surface of York Street. We did that purposely to avoid congestion and to, to better work with the businesses. So that's going to be delayed today, and then a week from now, we'll be paving overnight as well. In between there, they'll be doing some patching and usual things like that to, to prep the surface. So that can, that project continues to move along the, the timeline that we initially spelled out. This week, with regular garbage collection, is the free leaf collection. So there will be two of those this year. The first one is this week, and then the second one is the first week in December, and I'll remind everybody then. And then the last item that I have, next Monday's meeting ordinarily, which would be on Monday, is delayed Tuesday, and that's an observance of Veterans Day. So those will be our committee meetings, and then the committee of the whole following for budget.
Fantastic. Alderman Mulliner, you have a report?
Probably fits more under announcements, but just a reminder that Veterans Day does still occur on November 11th, which is Sunday, and there is the ceremony at the memorial on Sunday, and begins at 10:30. So it'd be nice to have as many people as we can there.
Okay, any other announcements? You have a report?
I just didn't say anything when I announced the voting for tomorrow, but I wanted to announce that we provided early voting for two weeks here, and I don't have a real number, but I can tell you, it may be near 6,500 people came. So I thought that was something interesting to share to the, to the community.
Well, I know periodically throughout the week, when I came in, it was wrapped around the building, so. Alderman Dunn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a quick report on the most recent ONCC meeting, which occurred last Friday. A woman from the FAA gave a, a pretty detailed technical presentation on some of the efforts the FAA has in analyzing noise. So there's studies on community annoyance that are, that are, they're partaking in. They had one on children's learning, to discern if there was any impact, excuse me, on airplane noise on children's learning. Turns out, there really wasn't. I guess the kids, kids can overlook that, that noise. They did a, they're doing a five-year sleep study on impacts of, long-term impacts of noise, airplane noise on sleep, and they're creating, developing a new complaint system for the residents to, to register complaints. The, there was, there was also a presentation, there's available to those homes and the noise contours. They can get sound insulation in their house, which is generally new windows. Those windows were creating an odor. You may or may not have heard the news. There was a lot of studying, studying on that noise, and, or, I'm sorry, that smell and the off-gassing from that, those windows. It turns out, it was the screen, there was a chemical on the screen that was causing that, and it's a pretty simple fix to replace the screen. And no health issues with the gas that was coming off those, so. That's my report. No, no meeting in December for the ONCC. Thanks.
Anyone else? Alderman Bram, you have a report?
Yes, thank you. It's tied to ONCC and Fly Quiet. It is my understanding that the Chicago Department of Aviation, CDA, has made a request of all communities to provide the community's Fly Quiet criteria, for Fly Quiet 21 is what they're calling it. And those suggestions, inputs, and ideas are to be submitted by tomorrow, or no later than tomorrow, Tuesday, November 6. I have not heard of anything that the city of Elmhurst has submitted, so I was wondering if I could get a report on, has the city of Elmhurst submitted anything to date, and if so, what? And if not, what will that be?
Anything else with your report there, Alderman Bram?
No.
Okay. I know Alderman Dunn and City Manager Grabowski have been talking about this specifically. Alderman Dunn, you want to texture?
The next Fly Quiet committee meeting is next Thursday, and they ask for these criteria in advance, so they, they can be listed in the, in the materials. We are looking at those, and if you do have some suggestions, if any of the Aldermen have suggestions on what they think are valid criteria for a, a long-term runway, runway rotation program, what some of those criteria might be, we'd be very welcome to hear those. Thanks.
Okay. I know we're going to submit something, Alderman Bram, so it hasn't been submitted yet, and as I said, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Grabowski are working on it, but it sounds like Alderman Dunn's happy to take any input as well.
We will have submission by the drop-dead date of tomorrow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other reports? Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. This past late weekend, both the York girls and boys participated in the state cross-country meet in Peoria. The girls finished 16th, led by senior Sarah May. The boys finished fourth, led by Ethan Kern, who's a junior, and he finished ninth place, so he's an all-state competitor. At the beginning of the year, the, the boys were, you know, earmarked to really be in the, you know, 20th, 25th place, so to say the least, ending up in fourth is quite the accomplishment. But more importantly, both teams represented York and Elmhurst, you know, with a fine performance, a lot of grit, and want to congratulate them.
Okay. Any other reports? Seeing none, go on, go on to other business. Any other business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Mulliner. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We're adjourned. Stay tuned for the committee of the whole. Do we have a date, a time on that? No later than, no earlier?